One nation, not another God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
Counselor, if you don't have any questions on the minutes. Got the motion to approve calendar items A. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve consent, calendar items four, A, B, C, D, E, F.
Second.
Kim.
Aye.
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 Ex-mayor's youth council. Come and stand up here so the mic will pick you up. Jeff, if you turn your mic just a little bit. Perfect, right there. You gotta tell us who you are. Gave you money in the past?
Approve the five hundred dollars.
Yeah, no kidding.
Do you know what? I have, I'm always for. About doing service projects every month, all the way from the table to the citizens and to the library, wiping the books for the children. I'd like to make a motion.
Put Jeff on your calendar.
Unconditional.
Alright, so it's been moved and seconded, then we go ahead and approve the five hundred dollars to the mayor's youth council. Alright, thank you. You young ladies don't have to wait. Alright, next on the agenda is Corey Johnson, and Corey's got a count. I've talked to Justin, and Justin said it's not a problem. He just said that there's plenty of places they can do it, so it won't be a problem.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
PSI. And you understand that you're lowering the rates, you're not raising them?
Oh, that was.
Wow. Didn't we get the, didn't we get the sign up on the door that said, "No dad jokes"? Didn't we? Did we not put that up? It must have fell down.
Must have fell down.
That was a pretty crappy segue.
No, I, I think you guys have done good. I know we struggle, I think at the end.
When I talked to Justin.
I talked to Justin earlier, he called me.
So, I don't know, Mayor, does this gonna be a bad county with the second? Contact with Bean County and Dan other kind of. Now the justice is.
Well, okay, so you told us fifteen, so we budgeted for fifteen, so is there any way to work on that five dollars?
That's what we're hoping.
Have, have other cities been committing to five-year terms beyond, beyond a single year?
Other than counties, counties for Idaho, county.
What cities have, have you done that with? Cause I, I'm, I don't disagree with you. My understanding coming into the meeting tonight, though, was that the city can't commit to contracts. But they're, they're always changing law, and there's always exceptions, and I don't claim to know everything. So, who have you talked to, and I'm happy to look into that. I would, I would hesitate to do it tonight, but. We did it before. Maybe, maybe this is a, I don't know. I know, I'm, I'm starting with just the general rule. General rule is, you know, can't really commit beyond our fiscal year budget. Um, but I can't, but there are some exceptions. Oh, that's true. There, there, there's some language we can plug into there that says, like, we have an automatic out, basically. So, so that's the one you're talking about, okay.
Yeah, so I wanna just, all I wanna do is.
I was gonna say, I didn't see a copy.
I haven't seen the contract. Unless it's like the one from, the one from last time, yeah.
I can email Sandy that mention.
So, you know, so next year it could go up again?
Not from PSI, but from just those. Well, this seems like, so Bonneville is the one. Right now, Bonneville is.
Well, I, I don't, explain to me, why does the county affect this? I know Bannock, but how, why, how does being an effect?
If, if Bingham County signed the contract with Bannock, then we're in county, classified as in county versus at county.
Oh, I see, so we become out county.
Our rates would go even higher.
Well, the DQ, I definitely ruled that we have to pay more. Okay, I get it.
We gotta write it. Cause, to be honest with you, we thought Bingham and, Bingham and. So, I guess. Let me take a look. I don't wanna do another, I mean, I'm, I'm fine doing another five-year, but.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to bring mostly, just to.
End of October, so it's not something that, yeah.
Not for the, because you, you have another year.
I see, okay.
Alright, no, we appreciate you guys, and, and you've done a good job.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda, park subdivision, town, residential and townhomes. Okay, so. Blake? Dave? Hey, guys. I just had a good talk. Let me know what, okay, I'm turning it over to you, Blake. This is your department.
Wow, look at that. And Justin called and talked to me earlier. Um, and Dave's here to help. All of our questions. Um, and I'm just looking through this to make sure that we have what we need. So, basically comes down to, if you look in your packet, through the development agreement, there's some things that needed to be changed, and Blake's not here, right? So, there are some things that needed to be changed on there, where we had that three and that five circle. Word three is there, and the five is in parentheses. While, while we're together on that, cause I made all of the changes that I was aware of. Uh, and I just wanted, yeah, make sure they were right, right, so there's no surprises. Um, it is three to five. On section four D for the water lines, do I understand that it's now twelve inch, not eight inch? That was an increase, and I just heard that that, Blake said, not an issue, you guys are just gonna do that, or is that correct? For the twelve, okay. Okay, yeah, no, no, I, I, yeah, I understand. I just wanna make sure that was, I'm not changing it on you in a way that's incorrect. And then, um, the other thing that we're probably gonna get to then is, I, I tried to call Blake today, cause we're gonna rework that language about the reimbursement part and the lift station. And it sounds like that's the part that, because of DQ, there's a question mark now over if they're gonna prove that or not. Is that correct at this point? That was, that was all I needed. I just wanted, mainly it was the, the one of my increases, okay?
Hey. There's just one thing holding this up.
Hey, so Dave, you talked to DQ, what, what can you tell us? So, I, I don't know that these guys. I mean, cause there's, there's a high amount of risk for that, to try and go after a temp.
Oh, it's, it's, it's explainable, I mean.
That's what we just did over a week.
And that included a, a two mile.
That, that's gonna have to happen. That, that's gonna have to happen. Speedy and see clarity as to what options are. And.
I thought after all the problems that.
Exactly.
Changed all that.
I thought we did too.
We had to go in and resolve those problems.
What did Brent do? What did, in his subdivision, did we not use that same?
Yeah, we're talking about growers, cause we had that big problem. Actually, we upgraded those higher standard. That time we didn't address the issue.
I remember signing the check that we paid you to redo that.
We don't have any meal.
Okay, so, give a little history so everybody understands. Originally, this group came in. If we put up the money for a lift station, you guys. So, we took a look at what the cost was for a lift station. Last year, and it worked. So I thought, okay, if this development puts in, uh, for a lift station, do five hundred thousand. City would put in four hundred thousand, basically that's what we ran. Then we were able to do it immediately. Well, then they come back and says that they can do it for a hundred thousand. So, so they can do it. So the problem is, we don't have the difference. We thought we were gonna help pass it. Not two thirds of it. So that's, that's the problem we're having now.
She's bringing in dots stuff, so what is she waiting for?
Okay, so let's.
Where's the difference? Like, that's a huge difference.
Well, the one that he had, and he gave us, was four hundred thousand.
Yeah, because they're, they're putting fifteen inch. That's what I was told last two weeks ago.
Cause we asked them to, right?
Yeah, so they're gonna accommodate.
That's correct.
This station could handle all that load.
They'd have to size it to the fifteen inch line. Number of homes.
Number of homes.
The basic American. Issue, we can also. I think there's a lot of places around town, we're gonna have that. Building goes to the south, we'll have the cost. I don't know falls lifts, all of everything. And will continue to probably do so, even when it's a truck line down, down, uh, York Road. So, to say that, you know, lift stations don't exist, they, you know, they, they do, and they do all the time, and they work really well. Big loss. If there's enough of the savings there, maybe.
You can't do anything until it's.
No, and that's my point, that's, I turned off the table, so I was thinking we're gonna do the, the course of putting in the. Yeah, cause it's already through. You. It's already. That cost of that line's gonna be. They got you on the same distance as.
Okay, so we've been, I feel like we've been, we've rounded up the wagon for a lot of good money. So we gotta move forward. We gotta get them moving. We want to. So. It's too often, and I don't like the lift station. So either we make an agreement or a plan. And reimburse all of their money. They're gonna want. They're gonna. They're gonna. And they don't get it. Even a thousand. They're gonna. But. Yeah. I would. You. Yeah. We don't. That's the.
But your only. One. One. The thing is. They're not facing. This. Is.
You get to chase money period. It's just which way do we chase it?
Oh, okay. So I'm, I'm, I'm talking outside the box here and I know I'm. DJ. I'm blaming this all on you.
Can I, can I just throw it out right now then?
Yeah.
And say.
That was your cue.
Don't do that. Whatever you're about to do, don't do it.
So.
There we go. There's my caveat.
Okay, my personal opinion is. That the city can probably come up with half the money. If they come up with the other half and we figured out. What these people appreciate for location. And, and we figured out a way to reimburse them for future development. On this left. Well, that, that's what I'm saying. We'd have to find out what the exact cost would be. Okay. Nine hundred thousand. We put up four fifty, you put up four fifty. Then. You're gonna use four percent of the hundred and forty thousand. And like you're listening to this, so make sure that I'm saying this right. So you're gonna put a hundred and forty thousand up front. And then you have the potential to get reimbursed for part, for. Part of that. Okay? Saving you money, not building the lift station. And saving us money, not having to go. Get a grant. And it gets paid back.
And more importantly, it gets you guys going. You're gonna have us reimbursed?
Uh, we're not getting reimbursed.
Fifteen percent.
Okay, so, so bottom line, the people at home in Shelly are not paying. For development. They're.
It's two sixty.
They're paying for the fact that we are already a hundred and thirteen percent older.
Exactly.
So, so that's what we're paying for is to upgrade the line.
So that we get out of that sticky situation.
So we go that, that situation. So it's. Clear to the public so they know. Clearly. That would not be any kind of. On our part, to them, it would be. Our overcapacity line is just trying to. Process they're paying for.
We'll get, we'll get three numbers of.
O- okay, so. Yes. Yes. But in order to get a grant. Then, then we had to hold off. So now that I have the four of you here, and I'm assuming the one in the middle. He's got all the money. So. No, I'm talking to you. I'm talking about Brian. I'm talking about Brian there. He's got all the money, so. Well, what I'm getting at is. You guys. If you guys are willing to work something like that out with us. Then we can. Put something together, put it out for bid. And kind of put a word.
What timeframe is?
Well, Dave would go out tomorrow.
Yeah, Dave will have big work. We can have it out.
It's already gonna approve by DQ. They can go out immediately.
Selection start this fall.
Yeah. It might drive on gravel roads for.
Down the north side. Outside.
Well, and, and I appreciate that. So I am as frustrated as you are. As I, I feel like we talked about five different or six different ways and it just. Center Street, for example. Everything flows from Center Street to First Street. Did you know that? Well, unfortunately. Center Street needs to be replaced, but if we replace Center Street. It still all flows to First Street, so we got to go to First Street first. So the problem is, is. And, and this, I'll take the blame for this one hundred percent. I was under the impression. That you guys were gonna put a lift station on. Then. I don't know who got together, but all of a sudden it wasn't gonna be a lift station. It was. We're gonna do gravity flow. And when you do gravity flow. You guys are gonna put up whatever cost of the lift station and the savings is different. I was under the impression that it was gonna be close to five hundred thousand. The city would be paying close to five hundred thousand. Well, then all of a sudden. It comes back and it's a hundred thousand. And then it's a hundred and forty thousand for the lift station. Then it's a hundred and eighty thousand for the lift station. So. So I feel like we're. I'm sitting here trying to hit a moving target. And so. That's, and I agree with you totally. This should have been done. Six months ago. When you guys came in before winter, it should have been done. But I feel like we're trying to hit a moving target. And so we all. Have been. In so many different conversations. But we never got in the right. I guess. And so that's why I'm saying, tonight, it'd be nice to say, okay. If we put up this much, you guys put up this much, we reimburse you a certain amount. And. But. The, the tough part is, is. H K and Nice River. Got an approval. From DQ. On a tour lift station. We don't know if they've actually got an approval. That. Is the same one that we were doing. So if we turn one in. And it comes back at four hundred and fifty thousand. And Nice River's telling you it's a hundred and eighty, or a hundred and forty thousand. And then when they turn it in, then they find out that it's four hundred and fifty thousand. That, that's our difference. So. I feel like. The city's trying to help you guys move forward faster, actually come back to bite us all on the butt. The center just said, go with the lift station and. But we were trying to work it out for everybody and. Trying to look forward and not backwards, I guess.
Uh, and, and that's happened a number of times with our city and you're right, uh, Brian. Exactly. That against the law. And so. City, we need to. Forward, I think. I just want, I want to be quickly so you guys can develop. So I think we can work on that. Shelly really hasn't grown, you know, everybody talks about growth in the city. A lot of it's in the county. The only growth we've really had in the city has been. Sunset Vista. And then we had a lift station.
So we had to put a lift station in.
We're behind the eight ball. You know, when you, when you say, we're, we're supposed to go down fur. Well, we, we thought we could go down fur. But we're starting to learn the, the down fur, the top's off the sewer. And, and it costs a lot of money just to replace sewers. We just can't, we don't have the money to go replace it. What we'll do in the future is when someone comes like you. Along, we will have an impact. We will know. Through our studies with Dave and everything else. What has to be done so we don't have those problems. I apologize. That's. All the hours. Um, but I think just going forward now is to, to minimize the cost. Do everything we can. So I, I, you know, I, I like this idea. The American.
So, if we, if we want you to go that direction, when can you have it? Or you got six hours.
No, I'm game for that, but that works for us because there only...
Well, I understand that. We, we've just gotta go through to make sure what we... Well, that's what we have to do, right?
There's no other way to do it.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's all his.
It's probably gonna be for, right now, it's... So, I, I think what we need to do is have you put that together and it'll be fine.
Why do you get the other?
Yeah, I did make some changes. Yeah, I, well, here, here's what I'm struggling with. This is such a mess. That procedurally, I'm unclear on exactly where we at, what we've already approved and what we haven't approved. Um, so, i-if the prior version of the development agreement was changed, was, was approved, and if you want me to go over, just so it's clear, the changes that we've already approved, are you asking just to approve it to that point? So, you'd be asking for approval of the agreement minus the sewer. Right? But you wanna, you wanna lock down the rest of the terms, right? And I don't remember, um, and it could be in here because I, like I said, I haven't... You're saying that in here somewhere, it says that you can start selling lots and they can get building permits and they can start building. Remember where that is, Blake, you know? Yeah, yeah. So, this is it. One, two, three. Okay. Right here, yeah. Prior to completion of the improvements, right? Yeah, and you guys understand that, I mean, the... Scenario, you're even indemnifying the city. Well, this, it goes beyond that. And indemnify, so not just held harmless. Harmless means you don't really do anything. Indemnify means they're actually gonna agree to pay the city if somebody tries to come after the city for... Which is, uh, worst case scenario, right? I'm not, I'm not predicting anything. But I'm just saying, yeah. It's, it was already in there and they're still cool with that. Well, basically, it's like talking about approving most of a development agreement. I haven't really dealt with this issue before, but... Well, I think, I think what they want, though, is more certainty because of the change.
They wanna start selling.
Right, 'cause this, 'cause the, 'cause the, because of the variations in the discussion over time, I think what they're asking for is can we at least solidify the portions that we do agree on, even though there's still a question mark over the sewer? You comfortable with that language? Yeah, you guys are comfortable with that language? Yeah. Well, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, so 4C.
I don't even know what it is.
Yeah, no, you, you're close. He's good, he's pretty good. No, so if, yeah, if, if... I think if, I mean, we, we have done that before, and I don't feel uncomfortable with that practice. So, if you want to approve the development agreement... I, I should say just one thing, though, and, and I wanna help these guys. I like, I like, know these guys, I like these guys, but... Sewer's kind of a big deal. It sounds like we've got at least two options that are probably, one, one of the other is going to work, right? So, anyway, normally, I would say, that's a big enough deal, I don't know how you can approve without knowing what the plan is moving forward. But after our discussion tonight, with there being a first, agreed first preference, and then a backup plan that we know we have some control over, it's, you know, we're not just at the, the mercy of DEQ, then council wants to do that, I think that'd be all right. Yeah. You can do that. Yeah, you can do it. You can say, subject to resolution, the sewer issue, if you wanna get that specific and say, one or the other, that's fine, too. It's gonna be permanent, a permanent lift station. Yeah, and we already talked about the, the other changes that we already made. Um, we went over those, Blake, before you came in, but...
All in favor? Okay, four in favor. All right, so, we, so we'll figure out what, what we've got. Here's the thing, we're, we're reimbursing you guys for part of the 15-inch line. So, I've gotta look at our budget and make sure... I know ballpark what we have, but I've gotta make sure I...
And we'll come, we'll come back, and we'll come back and talk about, you know, in open meeting, you guys come back and, and finalize the agreement on the sewer. Yep, yeah, yeah.
Start selling, so that way you guys have money.
No, 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 that's okay. This is under the city's obligation.
Well, see, we're requiring them to upgrade the road. But until the other side gets upgraded, we don't want them to upgrade the road.
Right, right. I don't... You know, Blake, you remember off Amber, that Saturn, has anybody else seen that in there? Because it sounds like, is you want that to be in there. I don't know that it is. I don't know that that's, I'm, I'm looking right here to see if I can find that. Do you know if it's in?
I thought we had it. Jasmine, put that in a minute, so we got it.
I remember.
Jasmine, if Phase, if Phase Two starts to upgrade the road, or when they do this, or when the development...
Well, we, and we can approve it with that amendment, Blake. We can just add it, so if it's not in there. Um, that's probably one need, yeah, probably just need to loop around. And so, that is the clarification that... Okay, so, um, yeah, we need a motion then to, to add that, those, that language. And the other is the streets, the, the street improvement on 12, 1300. That it will not be required until... For clarification, the earlier of those two events, right? Is there any 12-inch water line on 1300? None, okay. No water line, period. Okay. I'll run that language. Oh, I know, no, 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 I knew you didn't. You said you were in a meeting, you're fine, you're good. Jeez, who is this guy? Who is this guy? I can't, I won't be the, I won't be the one casting stones. We'll just, we'll just put it that way. I can't, I won't be the, I won't be the one casting stones, we'll just, we'll just put it that way.
Well, I thought we've had it worked out a few times and then something changed, so. So, anyway, okay, thank you guys. Uh, next, Sunset Vista, residents of townhomes. Development agreement.
How do we, it's right here, yeah, how do we know?
I'm asking you, Jake.
Yes, and I talked to Sandy earlier today too, and I think we're, it's all in good shape, the only thing that, uh, we, I'd ask the, the council to consider. Is, typically, we include a timeline for completing the project. And, uh, we've done that in years past, for some reason that didn't get included in here. In the, and, and really, really all we're looking at here is the addendum, right? I don't know if you have that in front of you, but there's the initial development agreement, which is what was originally approved for the whole schmear. And then, um, this is an addendum for the most recent division, is my understanding. No, this, oh, this is the one that's. Down off Ash Street, behind basics plant, and so.
So I have a question about that, I mean, do we, should we have that in the sub? That should have been on.
Give it, we can't give it to anybody.
Okay, so, so we need to do that then, so what, what's a fair? I say, I say three years.
I think three years.
I think we talked about this and said, three years is what we wanna have.
Three years to start, five years to finish, or?
Three years to finish.
You come in with a plan and say you're gonna develop, do you have three years to develop or it changes?
So that way, so let, let's put that in there. That, we also need the. Upgrades of new stations. Lots. Size of access to new stations.
Are you, you're, you're, you're moving, you're moving on to a different topic, right?
I'm just talking about, but I'm gonna take the Sandy. Side note, this is a side note.
Right, 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 no, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, so we're, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna finish Sunset Vista, before we.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry.
That'd be, yeah, I'm not a, the side note's great, everybody loves a side note, I'm just, I'm just saying, let's finish on.
We approved the addendum, we just need to add in that addendum.
Yeah. Yeah. Or else the approval is vacated. Yeah. Yeah, it does, and that raises, opens up a whole can of worms. Right. Similar to what? Well, and, and, and here, we're only.
Phases, and they're not even gonna get through, third phase done, for some reason.
Well, here's the, if, if this helps too, the addendum that we're talking about. This isn't the first time Sunset Vista's come before us, right? The addendum is only referring to divisions two and three and the townhomes. So what we're saying is, is that, the infrastructure to, on the developer's side, not the private construction, not anything beyond. The infrastructure would have to be done completely. There's, for divisions two, three, and the, and the townhomes. And if not, then they need to come back and talk.
Right.
No, 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 it's.
Triggers the event.
Right, we might, they might come back in and say, hey, we're, we're almost there, we need six months, and we'll say, great.
Yeah.
But what we're not gonna say is you haven't done anything and we'll just keep waiting for you indefinitely.
Makes them come and do something.
Right.
Alright.
Hey, so, finish in three years, applies to division, the other note was, um, there was a question about, I guess, one portion of this. Division two or three or townhomes, uh, includes, uh, retention ponds. Question about, yeah, well, I don't know, it's somewhere in there, there's a retention pond, and do we want to require those be fenced? I think this, we're just thinking here, a safety, safety issue, I know we, I know we did talk, oh, is that already in there? Oh, okay.
Six foot high privacy fence around three sides is the store retention.
Three sides.
Because it keeps it private but still accessible for them too. Also talk about the.
But. No, he's gonna put it in.
Going to, didn't put it in there?
Yeah, because the final plan, I believe, was based upon him having the secondary water system.
Uh, he put in.
Correct. So he found, he found a way to get it.
He did? Then we, we brainstormed with him, I remember that.
He's gonna go figure it out.
On the outside.
Okay.
There's, there's a easement, he can come.
Was he gonna come through the easement? He is gonna go through the easement. But I told him that he.
He said, I was gonna say, Jeff said.
Okay, so, the only thing then that I need to add. So then, the only thing that I need to add is the requirement, the timeline. Okay.
So can we make a motion and?
Can if you'd like.
I'll make a motion and go ahead and approve the addendum to the development agreement for Sunset Vista subdivision. Or, uh, Sunset Vision, Vista, Sub, two and three and the townhomes with the addition of, completion of the infrastructure in three years. Two and three and the townhomes. Sunset Vista, uh. All in favor? Correct, next citizen from the floor, don't worry about that one, okay, new town for business. Consider adoption of ordinance six twenty-five.
Seven one.
Oh, that's right, this was.
Send to them to, to review and look at.
That's right, this was, this was what was on the agenda last time, but because of the post, the, the posting issue, we couldn't take any action on it, so yeah, I remember what it is, yeah, this. This should incorporate all of the, the changes, if you wanna take a look at it, um. You can see, you can see all the amendments, what they are right there. You know, that's, that's a good question, Jeff, and I've wondered if there are going to be a couple of these kinda overlapping issues, um, I really don't. I really don't, you know, offhand, I don't know specifically if that's a conflict. But, but, yeah, I don't, that's, that's what I'm saying is, the, the simple answer is, don't worry, don't worry about it.
Um, so I move to spend the reading of ordinance number six twenty-five. On three different days and read the title of the ordinance six twenty-five. Ordinance's been in various sections of Title X and the C code, and the C of Shelly two and provided. We're gonna call this a, a recusal, I guess?
Yeah.
We'll just, at pass. I move to adopt ordinance. Regarding.
Six twenty-five. Three eyes, one. Uh, business licenses. There is a hydrant outside. Blackwater, they're gonna take away.
They're gonna haul away.
Wastewater?
Yeah.
So let's approve, so let's approve business license pinnacle. I move that we approve the business licenses for Pinnacle State and Swartson Bat Music. Let's actually look at the Swartson Tart, according to license, there's a type that looked like in the. Art? Swartson Tart.
Okay, move to second, that we approved these two business licenses, all in favor? Have on hold till they get a new name.
Yeah, well, yeah, do you wanna, you, you include that in your motion, that it will just table consideration of the rustic. Where she's, uh, she's gonna have to resubmit it anyway.
I, it's probably not, it's critical either way, technically, I probably would, but I don't think it. I don't think that it's a big deal, big enough deal, I don't think procedurally it's gonna matter.
Okay, next, Airbnb regulations.
I haven't, this is the first I'd heard anything about this here.
Only, only regulation being a business license, so the P and Z said, that they're not gonna, that we don't wanna regulate.
Right, so if you have an Airbnb, then you have to have a business.
I don't know, he's, he's already been. So what, what did they talk about, Jasmine?
Ash, Ash. Where the old like nursing home.
Ash.
So each room is a.
Yes.
Right, well, not, not all of them, some of them are still being fixed up, but, some of them, but that's what they're, that's what they're gonna be in Airbnbs.
Instead of making it a motel.
Which they can, which they can do.
And we have like three or four homes in the city.
In the city that are ran as Airbnbs. No, so like since they're running it as one business.
Single owner.
The same, so the own, one owner, even though they're running multiple ones, they would be required to get business license, so we know where the Airbnb.
Yeah, but if there's twenty-five rooms in there, you're gonna have twenty-five cars.
Don't they, don't they have off-street parking?
Off-street parking.
Now, I don't know how much, but I thought, I know they have some.
Well, they bought the property next to the.
Run as apartments before. Rented all those as apartments. Inside, before you.
What's it called when everybody sleeps in the same room? Hostela?
A bad idea.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with the bad idea.
I have a question.
That's not a fun vacation. Hostel, go on it.
Does that have?
Well, every room should have one.
Every room, so just depending on how many. They're supposed to.
Well, what do they have there, I wonder what?
I don't know, they, so off the top of my head, they pay like.
Well, I pay more than that.
In utility, so I don't know. Okay, but here's what they, we are, and I just asked you to, to talk about margin air view. So. Each one of the rooms, like.
They have a bathroom?
They have a bathroom.
Yeah.
I have continuous occupancy.
The INL, in, in the INL, um, interns. It's just the really ones that are here temporarily that they just. Typical, but they just say their longest are about three months and it's more, probably they're still a single person. Or an intern.
If you wanna find out what Asherman's. What are they paying for? Four units are renting, renovating it all, and the one that stayed over three months.
Do you have, do you have an existing category? Or assessing ERUs for something like that? That's the only thing. So as far as regulations go. I'm not a big fan of regulation, but this is kind of a different situation. I mean, we do need to consider how you wanna treat it. How's, are we gonna assess it for it?
Not just that, there's houses that are rented out there. The owners are out of staters, they have the houses and they rent a whole house.
Probably have one eight.
So like them, we would just go one area.
Right.
Right, and that makes sense. But it's the same situation. But the Airbnb isn't cheap, it's like fifteen hundred.
Alright, so we need to. We need to table it till we find out. Table that one. I'll make a motion that we table this Airbnb like. Move to second that we share, uh, table the Airbnb. Next.
We got, we got D and E and then F.
He were.
Oh, I dropped out of yours.
No, he is not on. Skipping over D.
Alright, my, I had an old agenda.
I'm, I'm skipping, I'm skipping. Why? Well, because we gotta figure out a plan with the law enforcement. Well, we can discuss it.
Well, the chief and I have discussed it.
Okay, so, my mistake, okay. Enforcement of dog at large or. Adam and Chief.
Sure, essentially what it is, is that we're, essentially what it is, is there's not gonna be any more freebies, right? I mean, we are not. When the dog is caught, there will be a fee, there will be. Um. I know there's a number of cases where. Reason I brought this up, Mayor, and the reason I went. A two children bit by dog. And it's becoming a regular thing. We actually had less dog encursions. Back in the last couple of weeks, I mean, that was a fact. Had two children bit. And that is becoming a regular thing. Not a lot of people.
Jeff, can you say something about it in a backyard?
I've got, I've got four issues on that one.
Well, and then there's also, there's, there's private rights of action too.
Well, and we have people attached with, uh, watching the dog.
Yeah, they shouldn't.
Essentially what we're saying is that there's not any more freebies, right? We're ticketing them if the dog is caught at large.
Not officers that should be doing other things. I, I wanted to bring this up. Help with?
What about community service? We got all kinds of people, you're saying, from community service.
It has to be that pound to five. Anyway.
I do. I think it's enough to sting, but it's not enough to crush anybody. And then if they do it again, it's gonna sting a little more. Again, it's not gonna bankrupt anybody. Keep going, then it gets more serious. I think that seems appropriate. We've just gotta take care of their animals.
The, the most I've ever seen is eight. All the officers are aware that this was now no freebies, this is gonna happen. Like, if I have seen.
And it does take.
Last month, I've taken five.
A month. Public needs. Dogs or. It's not just the police, it's the public. Protect ourselves and be able to have. Now, nowadays, I cannot.
My next question is, when you come pick up the dog, do you also tell them, ask if they're licensed?
They have the license. If they do not have some license, they do not give the dog back until the time.
And we, and we confirm that.
Right.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
If you're a public meeting. Yeah, would you like to address this public meeting for uh sewer district? Sewer district. We um are running up against. We have to have ten percent of the property owner in the city. Sign. Agreement that they will just allow this. Sewer district to go out to vote next. Now, I've got the, I've got the uh. The petitions. We have to do that. I would like to be able to go into people's homes. I would like to see if people would be in cottage meetings, but they just don't. So I'd like to put it out there that we have a, a meeting that's set in advance here a week or so. Have the council be there and explain to the people why we're doing.
Hey, can we, can we have them sign an online deal, like Dr. Sign?
It's not been approved, it's not been approved by the state as of.
State has not approved that.
Um, I, I just, I gotta throw one caution in here. Jeff, if you wanna go out and meet with somebody in the public, that's fine, no problem. If, if Leif, if you wanna do it, Kim, Adam, if you all wanna go out there separately. But if, if you're gonna call a meeting and gather together, then we run into all of our open meetings.
I can come to the meeting, right?
No, yeah, you can, but you said that you would like the council.
I, I don't want the council to come.
Okay, that, and that's, I just wanna clarify that.
Council to do this. If you could just take the time to go out in your neighborhoods and get people to sign. If you could have the mayor's youth council, this is a service project.
Well, let's, well, let's, let's be careful again that we're not using, you remember that?
Is that city money to use the youth there?
Well, it's the mayor's youth council, and if you're directing them to advocate for a position on a ballot measure. I, I would say, let's stay away from that. If, if individually, any one of you wants to do anything to support this, that's fine, that's on your own deal. But we shouldn't be using any kind of city resources, any kind of city funds, any sort of, any city.
All the coffee tables from my office.
There you go. Stay, we'll stay, steer clear of that.
And um, and then uh also, in addition to this ten acres. Addition to the. Person who has the. Also have to have. Own the five acres around the city and outside the city. Sign that they will be annexed into this district because they cannot be forced. So they either have to sign or they don't, and if they don't sign, then the legal description of the district has to be changed. Like that. There's about a hundred and ninety people overall. Around the city of Shelley, there's about a hundred. I will try to go door to door and do that. If I could have help, it would be helpful if we find. That situation.
Just split it up into sections and we'll, I'll take a section.
Like in that situation, we go out, we have to explain to them, you can't be forced into this. You have to sign up to be part of it. But motivation for them to be signed up, and I don't, the first thing you're gonna catch, and I, and I agree, um. Friend of mine outside the city limits says, oh, wait a minute, if I sign up, I gotta go clear across that road. With my sewer line, he's have to, I have to. Go underneath that road and it's gonna cost me as much as that. I think it costs me, I think that's a ripoff and this is government intrusion. I agree. But the problem is, is there's IDAPA rules wherein the. Health department requires anyone within three hundred feet of the sewer line must connect to it. So these people ha- ha- have to be told, when that happens, you'll wanna do it. You'll wanna sign up for it. Isn't, isn't it gonna cost them anything more to sign up? Doesn't it cost them any more in property time? It's just that when their sewer finally fails, they can go over. In the sewer feed. If they choose not to be part of. Then they will have to go get a survey. And request all that, because the department itself will not give it.
No, no, is there, is, is there something saying that, that we can take around with this?
DAPA rule.
Yeah, there is a rule.
Can we print that out?
Yes, we could, we could. I have, I have read it myself personally, I relied upon. Law firm and Al Paul's is working with us to, that's the case, but yes, I'll find it.
We don't wanna see that, right?
Right, so I think we'll, we'll have that out. And I think what we should do is probably send a letter, but then again, if we send a letter, I have to pay the postage. Well, Adam is sending out letters beforehand.
Well, if you remember, in that memo we put together, there's an.
Yeah.
It's exception for strictly informational purposes. That, that's the city can.
That's how they do it.
And do informational purposes, but if you're advocating one way or the other on an issue, then you're not supposed to, city, city resources or.
Well, I'm not, I'm not advocating one way or the other when I have this meeting. I'm there just to explain to the people, and I think once you explain to the, the people, probably.
Well, I think if you're explaining it to them that this is what they need to do, then you're probably advocating, which you can do in individually, absolutely.
Well, I wouldn't be saying this is what you need to do, I'm just saying, this is the option, or you don't have to do this option. But when you finally hear what the options are.
Will the sergeant in arms please remove the mayor's?
Is that the Shelley siren? I finally heard it.
It's not twelve.
Hey, it's midnight. I don't know. Hey, my phone was on silence, but it's still going off, so I don't. Okay, moving on, moving on, we beat that dead horse to death. Okay, next thing, uh, consider National Clear Clean Energy Week proclamation. You guys okay with that?
Well, yeah. If you're gonna proclaim it, I don't know, I don't know why we're doing this. I don't know what we're doing, why we're doing this, but. Do we, is this like something we have to have in order to qualify for some?
No.
Whatever, I, why?
Come on, let's see, Sandy?
It already happened last night.
Uh, so don't worry about it. You guys were mocking.
Well, we tried to do it beforehand, it was on the.
Bingham County.
Oh, I see, it was on the last.
Uh, somewhere back here, they're gonna have some kinda.
Request for zoning amendment from agriculture to residential agriculture of create, it's of six point six three acres. Like it's to create four parcels.
Where's that at?
Near, near the Woodson Heights subdivision fourteen fifteen north, nine fifty east.
Well, that's not where they're planning.
Missed my binder.
Yeah, it says it's by the Woodson Heights.
And past the Adams.
Now, whoa, where?
It's on fourteen fifteen north.
Is this ninety one? Looks like that's.
It's under by Lady Parker's Development that.
So this is where Matt and where carpenters used to live.
Yeah.
It's just to the.
So this whole farm is what they're trying to do? Is this?
Well, no, just right there, on the back of.
They want to break up a six point six acre.
You know what, you know what, maybe yours is, yours is right here, man, this is the one just down from, this is on, this is on Center Street, right? Stoddard Road. Stoddard Road.
I didn't even get one.
Fourteen hundred.
Okay. So they wanna take. They wanna take. They wanna take six and a half acres.
Yeah, it's right across.
Split it into four. Split it into four and a half.
Oh, yeah. Well. It really doesn't matter, so they're gonna.
They're outside the impact area, they're inside the impact area.
Are they inside the impact area?
Outside the impact area. Yeah, I don't.
Alright.
And then the next one is?
The next one was R and R Johnson Real Estate Holdings and.
This is the one they're having the public hearing on, right? This is the one they're having the public hearing on.
This is going out to Woodville.
On top to the Woodville Townsite, and they've been requesting quarter acres.
Did, did the Bingham County, did, the Bingham County county planning only?
Well, yeah, they did.
Well, yes and no.
Well, it looks like the P and Z approved it, then the county, the county commissioner sent it back.
Who's on the Bingham County?
Who's on it?
Yeah, the county commissioner sent it back to P and Z, and now there's signs out there.
Just wondering, like, who's on P and Z for?
I don't, I don't know.
Who would approve this huge subdivision that's going?
Now, so you know, Commissioner Mark Bear. Talking the other day, and he invited me to a. Discuss. Wells going in the ground. Imperative, we have enough dialogue. Not just the water and the sewer issues of, you know, septic and things of that sort.
All these people are gonna use our services.
Well, it's not just that they're using our services, and that, and that's perfectly fine, we're all one community. But the roads are not being developed. You, when you put a quarter acre sized development in, a hundred and fifty homes, and you leave it. Wide road. You will have what you have out these valuable falls. And someday someone's gonna have to improve those, and who's that gonna be? And what entity is going to charge that?
No.
No.
It's often the sweet. But just to the east of this, there's a seventy four. First Division seventy four home development going in. We have to have this discussion. Um.
Can you do it the other day?
Well, it's just, it's just.
I already have that scheduled.
It's just with me. But I'm hoping that we can open up a dialogue with the county. And I think we need to, I mean, at times we kinda, but I think. Got issues that are gonna require. We all meet in the middle somewhere, and I think that's something that we need to move to. Other commissioners in getting our ideas, our own impact area laid down, and also work on some of these. They do have direct impact on us.
Are they wanting comments?
Oh, this one's for information.
It's comment, but.
I think the comment we need to make is, as I said, is accessibility, infrastructure. Parks, um, you know, when I was on the planning and zoning, one of the last things we talked about doing. Every major street leaving this city will have a, a bicycle path, pedestrian path. So that we just don't have roads, sidewalks, we have places for people to run in that, and I think. That has to become part of this with the county as well, we need to go together. Develop this area in a way that. Well, wi- with, and that it's designed. Of wa- water is enough, all those wells in a, in a small area, draw down the water table, have effect on it, and in places where you don't have sewer. Septics and in smaller areas, we can get out east of Shelley here in the sand. And nitrate problems with. Same will happen with the sewage. Need to move these things into places where we have.
I recall, and I could be wrong, I think all of the commissioners when they ran, they wanted to keep. Uh, farming, agriculture, very important in our. But if they're putting subdivisions in all the farm grounds, it's all just.
Well, I believe Mr. Bear.
But didn't the county, county commissioners, like the planning and zoning approved it, but the commissioners denied it.
Commissioners denied it.
They denied it.
But they denied it for those two reasons.
And I believe, yeah, I believe Mark Bear, having spoken with him, he's concerned about this, and I, I appreciate him inviting me today. Start a dialogue with them.
I'm hopefully casting here. Well, there's a rezone for fourteen fifteen north, nine fifty east.
That was.
Yeah, this is what we just talked about, okay, okay, old council business. North Bingham County Park. So, um, as everybody knows, the mayor and I went and met with the commissioners on North Bingham County Park. About the possibility of us taking over the south end, uh, south of the tree line, it's actually not right at the tree line, cause. There's the well and the main line's right there, and so it would be just. Um, and it would be something that they would probably just need to us. Yep, so all of the.
Down the arena?
And the arena, and the flying field, yeah.
And the flying field.
Yep, all of that.
All the way over to coast.
Correct. They would keep the north end, which is the well, the grass, everything, the RV park.
RV park.
Correct. Okay, and the, the reason why we discussed that, obviously, we would eventually take over the north end of the park eventually. But the reason why we just wanted to go with the south end is because of that, a lot of the ideas takes, takes a lot of control over. Which I had a discussion with them. Ideas is a group of volunteers, uh, from C that is put together to take care of the nor- the northern historical park. Okay, that's. That is.
Ideas is what?
Yeah, like Jacqueline, their daughter is the president. And then they have, there's a, there's a pool. They're paying to have the yard. Ideas. And when I spoke with them, because I know that one of the concerns was the Justin one out there, and he kinda thought that it was gonna cost a lot to maintain and keep the. I had a discussion with Ideas as well, that they would be willing to do that, um, if the city were willing. You know what I'm saying, so they're willing to step up and talk. But we would have to, um, what's outside the city, but I do think it fits with the city's future plans. Um, and if Ideas is willing to step up and. Really, we'd probably, maybe the city would have to. The other thing that we would have to do as a city is we'd have to run a line. Farm over to water for the south.
So that has to be coordinated.
Because all they're using for is, um, just for grass and then for the.
How much you can use and where you can use it, so you can't just run over to your neighbor's house.
Well, that should be under the Stink River Valley. That right should be with them unless. Ask petition down.
Right, that's all, that's all I'm saying is we need to look at it, I'm not saying we can't do it, I'm just saying.
If it's still in there, then we can access it.
According to the county, they don't, they didn't have long time.
They don't have it. They don't have it.
Ever well. And if not, we might go to. Fire somehow.
You gotta, if you cut lands, gotta be.
Only other question I have is not that it'll have any impact on. Does that have any impact legally?
Good question, Josh, civic enough question.
I know that when we looked at the insurance for all of it, Sandy and I, we figured it's.
Sure.
Assuming the south end of it. Um, the proposal is, um, that we will take. Well, so.
The guy that lives out in the trailer.
Would be.
A little bit of insurance. Have to, uh, as far as Justin's crew going out there. As far as, I'm, you know, like if the sprinkler.
County's doing it, right, so like, do we have to? Think about us.
So, so I know Justin's concern is, once he, if he pick it over. They, do they do that now?
Um, no. There would have to be an agreement in place.
That's my thing, I'm, I'm not against it, I just don't want taxpayers that live in the city. The county's not doing.
Right, and I think a lot of people.
Well, I know the whole park itself is real. It's not split even.
Part of the park, it goes down to that, that, uh, line of, uh.
Yes, correct. Parking law.
That's the other thing.
Books in the arena. Yeah, right here.
Is it asphalt?
So, yeah, it's asphalt.
Park is approximately.
It's kinda broken up.
The park, it's about twenty one point four five acres.
There it is, twenty one point four five acres.
What's that?
I think we need to, we need to. Yeah, let's find out about the water stuff.
Yep.
Water's huge.
Yeah. No, they have a septic system.
Cause there is some bathrooms.
Oh, there's some bathrooms on this, so.
Is there bathrooms on the park that we do?
Those, isn't there an RV dump too?
That's on, that would be on county. The bathrooms are back in. No. Only two separate. Have to be.
They're quite far away.
Acre, acre and a half away.
On for our side, one Bingham County.
The county got one. Well, water, and we need to make sure we know where that is.
Our park is within the flood plain.
I thought the Sandy I looked at that.
Oh, it doesn't.
As far as the city goes.
Change the flow of the water.
Pick a schoolhouse and put a house up there.
Uh, they did, but that was before they. Now.
It's been a long time, oh, they recently did that.
Do it, but you have to, you have to. So is the farm across the road, is it? Or the farm that the city owns across the road, is it the floodplain? Their plane comes in and just comes down the road. Find out though, the men, I'm. I buy to discuss. Guys go where?
To the property.
To part of our. Yep, I know what I'm doing.
Okay. Turn and report, thank you. Okay, next uh, B. Consider stop sign on homes. Well, we never, we never decided anything yet. We've talked about, okay, there's water. We haven't decided anything yet, that's what we're doing right now. I'm saying leave it at the yield.
Back there, I know the one you're talking about.
On Satterfield Drive. I was looking where I was supposed to go and I did not see anything. I hit, I hit that thing, I'm like.
Okay, so, so what do you guys wanna do?
Have you had any complaints since we talked about it a month and a half ago? Nobody said anything. Hey, then, then I suggest that we just make sure that the yield signs uncovered and kept uncovered.
Alright.
Can I make a motion that we do not change anything?
Next, uh, changing the speed limit on West Fur.
That was Justin.
Because he had the, cause his crew was out there working and I'll tell you, I, I had a group of young men out there a week ago. And we were cleaning up where Justin's crew's been. In fact, nobody's out there other than the walkers. There, it does, they do come through, they're pretty fast.
Well, they are because there's no speed limit. And it, and I, and when I drive, I drive to.
He can find on that road, where's the Shelly's?
It was on, it was on the path, right?
Right, they didn't show up on top of the high schools.
Didn't the center one? Wasn't it the farmer that took the center one down, I think?
Them kids got a really cool sign.
It's huge too, they're big, they're big and heavy.
Replaced them like four years ago. And when it has rocks on it and, and string lights and balls.
So what can we do out there? We only have from where it touches the city.
Well, I'll, I'll be. You put the new sign out further.
Well, we gotta, we gotta post it. It's posted at thirty-five there. Okay, I thought you were gonna say it's posted at forty.
Like Kim's house, almost as good as back.
The biggest difference I saw is when it, that your um, your table sign is there. On the breaking pole down.
Yep, they do.
And yep, the other, the new signs, they won't react as much.
They're not as big.
They're not as big, they're smaller. I know, if you can see it.
Flashes at you.
Well, there's a construction going on there that I'm paying attention to.
Oh, you're, actually, it's the pink you have to go to, you're already stopped.
I don't mind slowing down, I just, my concern is if you go to thirty-five, you put your cop out there. You're coming to the ballgame. You're, you're gonna have some.
Do you know what? I kick off every time on the interstate in Pocatello, but I still have to slow down to sixty-five.
Eighty, and it's right underneath the underpass.
And there's cops out.
If one run makes two rights, then I, I guess, whatever, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I'm against that.
Yeah, I live there though, and I, and the schools right there and that pathway, the kids and Justin thought, like, it's dangerous. This is a danger thing, this doesn't have to do with kicking off some person.
Kim, is when you're leaving town and you're speeding up, you're gonna get pulled over by an officer. Now going forty, forty, forty-three miles an hour.
You're talking, like, you're talking about going.
I'm coming around the windows, right by the windows, and I'm starting to speed up and I'm going forty-three miles an hour. And that sign's thirty-five up there and I got, you know, an officer sitting over there in that, in that old driveway and he's gonna pull me halfway out the county. I'm not gonna be one tough on break.
I know, but, and coming out is different than coming in, but it's a safety thing.
Yeah.
You have to.
You have to enforce it both ways.
You do have to, and I would say the safety of the people on the pathway and our children is more important than.
Jeff being kicked off, then you gotta take it.
Dave, do you have a question?
That is absolutely right, inside the city limits, they have that, that right.
So every ten yards.
I know in the county, you have to have an engineer. You can't just really, really go out. Change it to forty-five.
How about, let's stay with this till next meeting.
It's the big yellow and white ones, it's, it's got your speed limit.
Says, thank you. Fire, bro.
They have the same ones over in Jackson and going to Seaton Village. They're a little bigger than the ones we have. Able to just talk about the speed limit and tell us.
Do I have a moment? Do I have a second? It's moving second and we're tableing for nineteen eighty dollars. Now, if we're going any further, since we're. I got a text and um. On table, the coffee shop, I worked out the dealing with the vinyl expression.
I know, fire text or send me that.
Okay, we need to prove it.
So she's like, okay, she couldn't hear very well through the audio. And that was just this morning that she.
Okay, so. From this point forward, where we've covered everything. So, council reports, BJ be quick please.
Okay. Um.
I did uh.
We need to go into executive session.
Yeah, that's, uh, I don't have anything actually to report tonight to the council.
Kevin, you got anything? Michael.
I would do the standards as a resolution. But we, what we'll also probably need to put something, is a code that says, where, you know, when a. If station is a pipe work or required by the city, that it meets standards that will be determined in the resolution. So we won't put the standards in the ordinance, but we do need it, something that, in the code that directs it to it. Okay.
We get scams all, all the time, but this one. I got, I was notified today, a friend of, of my family. Got a call in front of an individual with a heavy, heavy Mid Eastern accent. And had said Chief Rod Muller as a facility police department has a warrant out to arrest. And you have to pay this amount of money. Obviously, it's a scam, I had him uh, track the number down. Our three, five, seven, three, four, four, six. Somehow through a junk station.
Then they go back in and they throw it back and throw it back out.
So, they're, they're getting smarter, we've had these for a long, long time. Now they're using my name and it's tracked phone number, it actually goes to. Absolute scam. I'd like to get out to ev- everyone we can, this is a scam. I, I promise you, myself, the chief, will not call you and ask for money for an arrest one. Have one, I will visit with you.
And I think it's probably fair to say that.
I, no, I really don't.
Probably fair to say that, that not everybody in the Justice Department, the FBI. Or law enforcement.
Or accepts money over the phone, by the way. You cannot pay your IRS bill over the phone. Trust me, you cannot pay your IRS bill over the phone.
Law enforcement, the FBI, the CIA, IRS, they will not call you and solicit money for anything. I just figure our community might think that this might be real because they're actually using. It's really, really simple, you Google Shelly and I'm, all of us are all, all over this. Please let, let your, your folks know, this is a scam. I will not ignore anybody in law courts to call you and tell you you have a warrant and that you can pay for it. That was, I mean, it, it was personal, it, it happened to me just today. It's, there's warrant not to use a city phone number and my name.
Did you say that it happened to you? No, 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 it was reported to you then. Okay, okay, I thought somebody called you and said Chief Rod Muller. You would say, huh, that's funny. Cause I'm Chief Rod Moore. You said you heard about it today.
Because two years ago, my wife, we got a phone call at our home and it was the same scam. They just said it was the Department Service.
Sim- similar scam.
Uh, uh, same accent.
Yeah.
So.
Did I miss, did I miss the one in the mail? Justin wants to say thank you.
I love this.
Okay.
Domestic violence awareness vigil, we, we host it every year at the Shelly Park. She.
That is Thursday.
Thursday night. I encourage you to go and visit the, to visit the. And we thought uh, we were trying to practice that we clear, see if it's Thursday. Now there's some help people in this situation, because this is what they put on. Um, and it's Mary. I'll be there and it's Thursday at fifty P M at the Shelly.
Alright, well, I just wanna thank everyone for.
Uh, if the council wants to make a motion, it would be under sep- IDO code seventy-four dash two zero six. One F. That is to discuss. Exact language here. Not, oh, okay, yeah, yeah, wait, in a minute here, um. This is to uh, communicate with legal counsel, public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated. But imminently likely to be litigated.
Four dash.
I'll say.
Second, if we go into.
Sorry, it's a roll, roll call.
Oh, Jeff.